So when you sit at your desk, because I'm really tiny, I need something under my feet so that I can get the ninety degrees with my knees. This is actually really important because if, well, most of you are kind of taller people. So you might be way kind of above and your screen's all the way down there and you're kind of cranking. And like Carrie is saying, there's no space for you to move your arm naturally. So maybe you're kind of in this kind of state the whole day. Yeah, which every time we do something, of course, it feeds messages to your mind. And our bodies do adapt. So if you don't want to become converted by your environment, it's a good idea to make your environment something that is suitable for you. So I like to go over the top if I can and actually not all the time. But when I thought about us meeting and chatting about this, I wonder if you would want to make your workspace more lovely for you? And if you have any ideas how you might do that? Because most of what I do and what I'm focusing on is your parasympathetic nervous system. So usually, and especially with how we're all feeling like we are working against stress these days, your body naturally goes into a loop. So your adrenals tend to overreact and become hyperactive. And as that happens, even though you know that physically you're safe, the rest of you, because your brain is going, "I'm out of time, my body's not comfortable." You know, "There's so much on my plate, I gotta hit all of these things on my to-do list." So constantly, it's gonna affect your breath, it's gonna affect your experience of being in your body, which starts to tell your body that it's in a certain space and it's having a certain experience. So to kind of come off that vicious cycle, which is why I'm suggesting ridiculous dramatic things, like having your favorite aromas near you, having even, you know, your baking bread that you can smell behind you. So don't feel like you're doing too much and don't feel like you're pampering yourself too much. In fact, today, I think one of the key questions that maybe you can percolate on is, "How can I make my work environment at home awesome?" So instead of just like, "Oh, this is where, you know, I roll out of bed and I come to my desk and I drink my coffee and I start grinding." Like, "How can I make this something I want to come to?" So anyway, that's just a suggestion. I'm gonna take you into an experience right now of chair yoga itself. Because I think it'd be really good if we can do something that is movement or breath or mindfulness, kind of every half an hour, forty-five minutes, or even just every hour. And I know that it's difficult to remind yourself to do that. So we're not gonna worry about that yet. We're just gonna have an experience so that, again, we are letting the body and the mind have that connection. And the more these neural paths are built for you, where your body, instead of habitually going into stress mode, your body goes, "Oh, actually, I could take that other path." Because either your foot is going to be for your nervous system, it's gonna be on the accelerator, or it'll be on the brake. So there's actually only two options. So the more you're always accelerating, the more it will continue and it will kind of go into a crazy cycle. Or the more we practice coming back into our bodies, coming back into feeling grounded, feeling present, feeling that we can breathe. Because I think right now with stress, it's very normal for us to feel like breathing is different. But because we're dealing with so much, we don't even pay attention to that. So let's give it a go. Sit comfortably wherever you are. So right now, kind of check out what's going on. If you're seated and you're finding that your feet are not supported, or if you're seated and you're finding that your back wants to rest against something, kind of really make yourself comfortable. So really shift, make it happen for you so that... And I'm gonna bring in this cushion because it really changes things up for me under my feet. And then we're going to take a moment here and just rest our hands onto our lap. So you're gonna close your eyes for a moment and just bring your awareness. So bringing your awareness just means feel. Feel what sensations are arising for you in your hands. So are you feeling the fabric of what you're wearing? Are you feeling the warmth of your body? Just let yourself feel for a moment. Because when we tend to go into our sympathetic nervous system, where we're in that fighting mode, we tend to bring everything into just the head because we're trying to problem solve. So coming back into your body now. Shift and make sure that your seat feels really stable. Your weight is evenly distributed under your seat. So notice and sense your left hip, left thigh, the back of it. And then notice your right hip, your right thigh, the back of it. And see if you can let the hips, the thighs, just really have a chance to rest into that support of your chair. Great. And then if you want to sit and lean back, if you wanna let your back body be supportive, feel free to do that. You can also feel free to kind of sit, and let's not call it straight because that makes us really rigid, but if you wanna sit forward, that's fine too. Just whatever is comfortable right now. Check in with yourself again. Close your eyes for a moment, ask yourself, "What would make me comfortable right now?" And then as you listen to yourself, as you make that choice on what would make me more comfortable right now, notice your body responding. Notice your mind responding, notice your breath responding. Great, we're gonna take a deep breath in together. There's nothing forced about it, just letting the breath reach gently all the way in. Letting that entire inhale just come in. And then as you exhale, let's exhale through the mouth, so let's go. Maybe you don't get to stye around each other very often, so I give you full permission right now. Take another breath in, and then as you exhale. Nice, and then notice as you let yourself do that, your exhalation, especially if it's longer, helps you to, again, slide into that restore the rejuvenation, the parasympathetic nervous system. Beautiful. So just a little bit more with our breath here. We're gonna take one hand to the heart now. And the other hand, maybe to your solar plexus or wherever is comfortable, maybe a little lower, over your belly button. Nice, and then really let yourself snuggle into your chair, really let your chair hold you. And then let's take another deep breath in and exhale. Nice, and let's go through a little bit of a guided breath here. So for the next three breaths, we're going to release physical tension from the body. So just gently let your breath flow in. And as you become aware of any physical tension in your body, just let it ride out on your exhalation. Nice, and two more like that on your own, with your own breath. One more like that. Nice, and then just take a moment here, let the eyes still be relaxed or closed. And just check in, even after just taking three breaths, has anything shifted? If you notice that anything has shifted, know that in your day, anytime you need to take three breaths, you can afford that half a minute to take three breaths, just to come back to your body. We're just gonna switch the hands, so the other hand's gonna go higher now. And the other one's gonna go to your belly. Nice, and then for the next three breaths, we're going to kind of sense what emotional tension is in the body. You don't need to analyze it, your mind knows, your heart knows. And by not having to describe it, not having to control what degree we're going to let go of, just gonna trust it, breathe in, let that prana, let that breath flow in. And as you exhale. Nice, and two more breaths like that, just the lighting and the availability of your ability to shift within. And one more like that. Beautiful, and let's just release the hands back onto the lap. Take a moment there. And notice that right now, your hands on your lap feel different than when we first began. When you first had your hands on your lap, were you in a different place mentally than right now? Great, nice. And then from here, we're going to sit forward a little, just so that your knees feel free. And again, still checking in, make sure that you have around that ninety degrees. If you need anything to support you, just bring in your pillows, your little stools, anything at all. Then hands are going onto your lap, we're gonna come into cat and cow seated. So when you inhale, you're gonna roll the heart up, so you're gonna slide your hands back and roll the heart up. If it's comfortable for you to take the head a little bit back, we're gonna bring the head up and back. And the shoulders are gonna roll back. And then when we exhale, the hands are gonna slide forward, maybe down over the knees. And we're gonna round the spine. Great, and continuing like this, I'm just gonna show you from the side too so that you can see it, you don't have to shift where you are. So inhale, we're gonna roll the heart up, rolling the shoulders back. And then exhale, really rounding the spine, stretching the whole spine. So we're gonna do this a little while more, maybe about half a minute. You don't have to count anything at all, I'll be helping you keep track of time. So just really let yourself play with being in your breath now. If your breath is able to synchronize of your movement, what does that feel like? Exhale, round. And it's your own breath, your own rhythm. If today the breath feels short, just let it be short. If the breath is tight, just let it be tight. So just trust that as you align your breath with your mind, with your body, that it will naturally just take the magic of these practices and do what they'll do to help you come back into the body. Great, so a few more times like this, really noticing if, as you do this, if there's a sense of the spine becoming more mobile. If there's any places that were a little bit stuck, that are now just maybe creaking open. Nice, let's just do one more like that. Thanks. Great, and then coming back to center, we're just gonna take a moment and now feel your feet. Feel beneath your feet. I don't know if you might be wearing shoes, slippers, or socks. But right now, just feel under the sole of your feet, the surface that your feet are on. Let your awareness, again, connect all the way down. Great, and we're going to relax the shoulders and slide the left hand. Maybe put your left hand on the side of your chair, if that feels like good support, or you can just simply lengthen down. And we'll bring the right arm up. Nice, but relax the right shoulder. And then just little by little leaning to your left. I know some of you are taking care of neck issues. In that case, feel free to look forward instead of tilting. So do what feels right. Tuck your chin a little if you can, and if that feels good as a stretch. And we'll just lengthen out. Nice, take a couple more breaths like that. Take the chest to turn open more towards the sky. Notice if it feels different. So when you're forward, it feels a certain way, and if you turn it open and extend. And then see if you can find your right sit bone, and we're gonna ground down through your right sit bone. See if that feels different. We're making a connection. Relax that right shoulder again. Great, and then let's come back, shift to the other side. Right arm is gonna come down, whichever arm you're using. Lengthen the other one up, keep that shoulder relaxed. And then we'll just lean gently to the side. This happens once a session, just dropping things. So take your time, we're going to keep breath by breath, noticing what is happening within those breaths. You're gonna turn the ribs open to the sky again, lengthening away. And then check in right now, what would help you to feel more sensation of opening through the left side body? We just did it on the other side, I wonder if any of you remember with your body. Sometimes the body remembers. So left sit bone is gonna ground down and we're gonna lengthen. Great, beautiful. And then press down through your feet, bring the belly button in, and we're back. Awesome, and then just some Lucy Goosey, whatever you like. You're gonna, this is where Mikel said we're gonna do interpretive dance. So let yourself, and I'm always an octopus for these things. So let yourself be whatever you like, maybe even turn into an animal. Like, if at your desk today, suddenly you feel like being a bear or being a cat. It's fun, kids get to do those things. And why don't we, why do we just sit at a desk the whole day and think that we have to be like robots? Great, beautiful, right? Okay, and then from here, we're going to also do one more neck stretch. So right hand over the side of the head. Nice, and again, this is for people where the neck feels okay with this. If it doesn't, really don't have to go to the side. And then we're gonna let ourselves lean more to the side, tuck the chin in a little bit. Nice, your elbow, the weight of your arm is gonna draw gently down. So you're not efforting, you're just letting gravity do this. Nice, and then left fingertips are gonna lengthen down. Great, and then we're going to take the front of that left shoulder back a little bit more. Yeah, it means that both your shoulder blades are gonna glide down towards the hips a little bit more. And then we're gonna make a few circles with the left arm. So let yourself extend through your fingertips, then make some circles in one direction. Nice, I'm very happy to see an engineer. Shout out, shout out, and then switch sides, turn it the other way. Nice, beautiful, extend away. And as you release, nothing is ever abrupt. This is all about just being really good friends of ourselves, our bodies. Back to center, let's take the other side, tuck your chin, left ear to the left shoulder. Hand on top, left hand on top of the head. Bring your right arm out. Great, left elbow is gonna draw down, tuck the chin a little bit. Take the front of the right shoulder back. Nice, and that's plenty, feel free to stay here, especially if there's already a lot going on. And then if it's available, if it feels okay today, make some circles with the right arm. Nice, breathing into this. Nice, yeah, we might be feeling some really glued-together bits of the body right now, and that's fine, so we become aware of where they are and change the direction of those circles. Yeah, nice, so we just identify where those places are and we pay more attention to them. Great, and then again, gently release, back to center. Let's take a couple of cat and cow again, just to let the body come through into a counter pose. So inhale, draw up, exhale, round. And inhale, draw up. Exhale, round. Nice, great, and then I'm actually gonna make us get up. I hope that we're not all gonna have our heads cut off, but it should be okay. So now, come up and let's use the table for a moment. Just gonna move this chair over here now. Great, and you can watch me for a moment. Basically, we're going into a half standing forward bend. So you're gonna take your hands onto the top of your table. And all we're doing is we're gonna start walking the feet back. As you walk the feet back, when your body reaches maybe about a ninety-degree angle, and it doesn't have to, maybe for you it's higher because the hamstrings are really tight today. Totally fine. Then from there, if it feels okay, you're gonna let the chest release and you're gonna let the chin release towards the throat. So the head is just gonna release towards the earth. And there's no pushing here, you're not trying to push your head down towards the earth. Maybe micro-bend your knees a little if that feels good. And now the same thing with that awareness, your hands, feel everything that you can under your palms right now. Feel that surface that you're connecting with. And then with your feet, everything that is under the sole of your feet, the temperature, the pressure, the texture of that surface, press your feet gently in and let yourself record what is your surroundings. Keep drawing the hips back, we're gonna take a few more breaths there. Release the chest, release the entire body just through the arms. If it feels really nice for you here, feel free to stay here for a couple more breaths. If for you, this feels like it's a lot today, feel free to start walking your feet forward and we'll come on back up. Nice, so for some people, when you tilt forward, you might get dizzy and it's just maybe due to your natural blood pressure. So this pose lowers your blood pressure. It should feel nice for your shoulders. Is everybody feeling like that was a shoulder stretch for you? Did that feel good at all? Cool, nice, and then we're gonna do a variation on this. So pretty much the same thing, except this time, and you can watch me first. As you come back into the same shape, you're bending your left knee and drawing your right hip back and looking under your right arm. So that will feel like a lot more opening into the side of the right hip. And also, as you twist, you're helping your spine. My ears have big holes, I guess. As you twist into your spine, you're gonna help release anything that feels compressed. So it's almost like giving yourself a gentle chiropractic session. So a few more breaths like that, you're halfway bent forward and you're drawing your right hip back with the left knee bent. And then you're gonna shift sides, so you're gonna bend the right knee and draw the left hip back. And we'll take about five breaths there. So when we practice mindfulness, we allow each cycle of breath to be a space that is contained within itself. So your in-breath and your out-breath makes one cycle and that's all that you need to be concerned with. So just taking another breath there. And again, those of you who feel like you'd rather come back up, you can start walking your feet forward and coming back up. Great, so we're going to take the chair again and you're going to be seated with yourself being a little bit more towards the front of your chair. So again, the legs are more free. Great, and then we're just going to inhale and just maybe bring the arms up if that feels okay. Relax your shoulders. Feel both hips, so shift a little and adjust so the sit bones feel nice and grounded. Align the crown of your head with your tailbone. Beautiful, and we're gonna turn the palms out and we're gonna reach back. And you're gonna hold wherever you feel is comfortable for you to hold along the sides of your chair. Nice, great, and then we're going to just draw the shoulders up and back a little bit more. Nice, squeeze your shoulder blades in, twist each other. And then for those of you where this feels okay, you're gonna shimmy your seat back a little bit and let yourself lean forward. You're tucking your chin, you're gently holding so you're not gripping the chair. And just letting yourself draw forward. And if it feels okay, you're gonna let yourself release the head side to side. Just breathing into the tops of your shoulders. Great, beautiful, I can see that you're actually taking it breath by breath, so that's really great. Few more like that, side to side, taking your time. Really letting yourself feel the sensations. Great, and then you're coming back to center. Nice, and from there, if it feels okay, you're either gonna take your arms higher or you can interlace your hands behind you, whatever feels nice for you. I'm gonna suggest maybe taking your hands higher so you see what it's like to do with the chair. Because a lot of us who have been doing the yoga are used to the interlacing. We're gonna roll the shoulders back again. And we're going to bring the sit bones evenly onto the chair. Squeeze your shoulder blades together and again, just let yourself draw the heart forward and breathe. This is a really good one, especially if you have been at your computer a lot and you have a lot of soreness in the tops of your shoulders, in your mid-back, your upper back. This is really lovely. So a few more breaths like that, maybe again, taking the head side to side. Experiment with letting the chin come a little closer towards the chest. See if that gives you a different sensation. If you wanna do neck circles, if that feels good for you. You can take some neck circles in one direction. And then switching that direction, trying the opposite way. Cool, awesome. And again, when we release, so when we are in a mindful state, we're not gonna just abruptly like drop everything. So just let yourself gently come back to center again, always find home again within. Now we're gonna twist, so you're going to sit on one side with the back of the chair facing one side, maybe your right side. I'm gonna bring in my little support again under my feet. This one is nice and easy, so hands just onto the sides of the chair. Nice, beautiful. Oh, where are you going? I'm just kidding. And then press down through your feet, draw the heart up. And as you exhale, squeeze the shoulder blades towards each other. Press the right hand against the chair more and turn the heart to the right. Nice, and breathe into your twist, let your belly button be like the torchlight that is shining towards the right. And really breathe all the way into your belly button. Nice to bring some circulation into that area. So our gut is our second brain, it's connected to a lot of, again, our emotional self-regulation abilities. Couple more breaths like that. Great, and then exhale, release, facing forward. Nice, so then you're just coming to your other side, feel free to face away from me. I'm just gonna turn the chair because that will be a quick thing for me. Nice, and now the back of the chair is to your left side. Hands are onto the sides of the chair. Press down through your feet, inhale, draw the heart up. Crown of the head lengthens to the sky and your sit bones are drawing down towards the earth. Beautiful, and then press against the chair of your left hand a little bit more. Shine the belly button to your left. And so it's a breath by breath progression. You don't have to go to your maximum stretch right away. You can just be in one breath, coming to your first little ten degrees of rotation. And then with your next out-breath, maybe it's another ten degrees. Whatever that is, you are going to be the expert of your own experience, so check in. Few more breaths like that. Great, and then exhale, release. Awesome, then we're going to sit facing the front again. How's everybody doing so far? And then you don't even need to buy a yoga mat. So we're cool, so for the next one. You are going to reach for your right ankle of your right hand. So if you feel like that's gonna be a bit of a stretch for you, pun intended, feel free to take your scarf or your... feel free to take your scarf or your belt so that you have something to connect to your ankle. And we're gonna begin by sitting off to the side of the chair. I'm gonna shift back more because I think you can see my chair better. So my left side of my butt is on the chair and the right side is off the chair. I'm gonna hold with my left hand the side of the chair. Great. And then let's maybe just start to walk the right foot back, let's give options. So if bringing the leg up and holding it is just silly for today, feel free to bring the right foot back, press your toes to the earth and you're gonna get a quad stretch that way. And otherwise, right hand holding the ankle, we're gonna draw the leg back. We're gonna try to bring the right heel to the right buttock. Nice. Press the right knee in towards the chair again, so we don't really wanna spin out like Coco. We're gonna bring the right knee in towards the chair. Nice. Maybe you're gonna flex the right foot. Beautiful. Roll the right shoulder back, draw your shoulder blades together again and lengthen up through the crown of your head. Nice. It's a lot of things happening at the same time. Which is why yoga is really good for getting you kind of out of that um rumination headspace into an embodied place for your back in your body, very important. Few more breaths like that, keep drawing the right knee back. Keep drawing the inside of the right leg towards the chair. Nice. One more breath like that. Beautiful. And then exhale for release. Great. We'll transition to another pose before we take the quad stretch on the left. So now back onto your chair, right ankle over the left leg. This is such a good one, so this is one for runners and such um or just us who sit a lot at a desk. You can have a meeting and you can be doing this and nobody can see. You can be leaning forward and really interested in what people are talking about. And you're gonna get a really awesome hip stretch. So right knee is to the side, right foot is flexed. Right shin, we can try to have it facing forward, if it doesn't face forward, you're fine. And then we're going to, if you have your desk in front of you, you can even walk your hands forward along the desk. Or if you want to drape forward, you can let yourself curl forward over the leg. And for most of us, it's gonna feel like, wow, it's um really a lot going on there. So again, adjust the degree of how much you go into this. Yeah. Bring yourself back to that mindful breath. So let yourself tune in to what approach might help you to approach this kindly. To make this just about you exploring and breathing. It's not about achieving all of those yoga magazines with um people doing shapes in those photos. Those are their shapes and their bodies. We're here to love our bodies just as they are. So just knowing that especially if you have a lot of stuff going on there, if things are tight, you're actually getting a lot more out of this and it's really good for you. So doing something that's really good for you, taking three more breaths there. And with hip stuff, um you wanna stay longer. So hips are starving. So you can kind of hang out longer, you can come back, you know, sit straight and then go up and in again. Take your time, stay there for maybe, if you're at home, a few minutes at least. Great. And then gently coming back up. That was so painful but so good. And then right foot back on the ground. We're gonna switch to the other side for our seated pigeon. Left ankle over the right leg. Nice, relax your shoulders. Beautiful, and then again, inhale, draw the heart up. So usually with yoga, we're not curling like this, we're keeping the front body lengthened. And then we're going to extend the belly over the legs. Again, if you're using your table, you can relax your arms on the table and keep lengthening forward. If you want to just hang forward, you can do that too. Left foot is flexed a little. Outer side of the left thigh is drawing down towards the chair. Great, we're gonna breathe here, just like we did on the other side. And then if you notice that there's tension in your body right now as you approach this or if you notice your breath is changing and becoming shorter, it's just your body's way of telling you, ah, that's a little far. So then all you need to do is to take a little step back and hang out and then the body will over time develop um the ability to just soften into that opening. So just take a few more breaths now. Great. And then press down through your right foot. Belly button comes in towards the spine and we'll come on back. And then we're gonna scoot to the left side of the chair. Nice. Left hand holds the ankle, right hand holds the chair. And again, the other option is right leg can extend back and toes are pressing down onto the earth. Whatever is best for you as a quad stretch today. Great. And then once we have connected to the ankle, we're going to roll the shoulders back and draw the heart up. Nice. Left knee is gonna draw towards the chair a little bit more. So we're gonna try to have more of an alignment instead of the leg peeling up. It's gonna press down and back. Beautiful, and then we're just breathe here. Cool, okay, I'm gonna throw in a curve ball, so if you want to, you're gonna lean your heart forward. You're gonna maybe bring your right arm up. Touch your thumb and index finger. Whoa, nice. Relax your shoulders and be in dance repose, fully supported. Hit cool stuff, Merrick. Breathing into this. Nice, few more breaths like that, keep drawing that left knee back. Relax your shoulders, don't let the head and the neck get um overly concerned about things, so they don't need to effort. Great. And then exhale, release. We're gonna take a moment now, we're just gonna sit back. You're going to even let your legs be a little wider, your feet hopefully still planted on the ground. And you're just gonna lean back, kind of like a boss. And then ah, let the shoulders relax back, if it feels comfortable, I'm gonna let the head relax back, only if that's comfortable. Great. And then interlace your hands behind your head, shrug your shoulder blades down a bit more. And just breathe into this. I know it's not the most elegant, but it feels good, right? So a few more breaths like that. Feel the lengthening along the front of the belly and feel yourself just relaxing into everything. Great. And then we're gonna come on back. Nice. So now knees are still bent about hip width apart, we're gonna come into a forward bend. And we're going to, very simple. So either you're gonna use your table again and you're gonna fold forward like this in your forward bend or we're gonna drape all the way forward. So you're just going to let yourself drape through the legs and curl forward this time. And we're gonna let gravity take care of bringing fresh blood flow into the head. We're gonna let gravity help us to lengthen the spine. So a lot of us have um compressed places, maybe even this. And by allowing yourself, if the shape helps you to lengthen and open up into those places and always check to feel if that feels right for you. Then take 10 breaths there, just nothing else to have to do. Sometimes you're really tired and sometimes you can't concentrate or you cannot think straight. Good pose to just do. And it's very um calming, so sometimes when we're feeling uh maybe agitated. It's a nice calming, grounding shape to be in. Nice, just a few more breaths there. Great. And then taking your time, we're going to get you to come on back. So you are going to grab your chair and have your chair just to the side like this. Oh, actually, let's have the back of the chair face forward. Nice. So we're gonna twist again and this twist is gonna be really good for the hips, the spine and also the mid back. And now I'm facing the chair and I'm gonna put my right leg, which is the closest to the back of the chair. So I'm gonna bring the right foot and press the right foot down on the chair. Nice. My hands are going to hold on to the top of the chair. Beautiful. And then just check, if you feel like the left leg is kind of way out and you're feeling a little bit bizarre, walk the left foot in a little bit more, you wanna feel like your center of gravity is just going straight down. Nice. So hands under the chair, press down through the feet, inhale, draw the heart up and exhale, we're gonna twist. Nice. Notice if you let the right foot just be all like flopsy flopsy, how it feels for your twist? Or if you press down through the inside of your right foot, how does that feel for your twist? Great. Right outer hip is gonna relax down towards the earth. Thanks, a couple more breaths like that, continuing to deepen the twist on the exhale. Great. And then exhale, release. Nice. Then we're gonna step a little bit further away from the chair. And now you're gonna bring the right heel onto the chair. So just adjust until you feel like um you are nice and stable. Your foot is on the chair, the heel and your leg is lengthened. And then reach forward a little bit, so it's a bit of a hamstring stretch. Nice. Let's get our hands on to the chair, so just holding wherever feels right for your body today. Draw the right hip back, draw the heart forward and then take your time to just lean forward into this. You can micro bend your right knee if that feels better, because it could be that a lot of sensation is happening. Good job, very nice, relax your shoulders, just keep lengthening forward. Feel like your outer right foot is pressing back and the inner right foot is pressing forward. Nice. And then feel free to relax into this even more and just let yourself drape over the leg, just to wherever you can. Nice. And then let's take the opportunity to be extra nice to ourselves. So if you're noticing right now that you are pushing yourself beyond where you want to be, um there's no need to get caught up about making that decision or having made that decision. Just simply choose where a kind of place would be for you right now, over your hamstring. Great. Very nice. And then we're gonna let ourselves come up a little bit more. Still keep that right leg on the chair, left hand comes on to the chair, right hand on to your right hip and we're gonna twist. Great. And then maybe we're gonna extend the right arm out a bit more. And we're always rooting down and lengthening away from the root. So root down through your foot, your left foot and draw up through the crown of the head. Soften the right shoulder blade and let's take two more breaths with each exhale, turning the heart more to the right. Ooh, wonder how people are doing with their wheelchairs. Great, and then exhale for release and just bringing your right leg back. Cool. Doing okay, and then other side. So this time we're going to have the left leg on the chair. Great. So this is actually the same, but now I'm facing the chair, you can choose whichever way you wanna face. We're gonna maybe reach the hands forward and walk the hands down. Nice. And then take your time, slowly let yourself fold over the leg. Nice, feel free to micro bend your right leg as you fold forward. So whatever orientation your chair is in for this one, it um doesn't matter as long as you're able to have support for your hands and under your left heel. Take a few more breaths like that. So just showing you that so you don't get caught up in where's the chair facing or am I doing it right? Don't worry about any of those things, just know that if you're feeling a stretch, if you're feeling stable, if you're focusing on just letting yourself breathe, you're doing very well. Great, and then from here, coming back up. Great. Nice. And then we're gonna take the left hand on to the left hip. And this time we're gonna extend the right hand and right hand's gonna reach for the chair. Nice, if you're finding that that's challenging, feel free to turn the chair so that this is closer to you, the back of the chair. Nice, and then we're gonna inhale, draw up, exhale, twist and extend the left arm away, you can even look towards the left. Great, and we're just breathing here, a few more breaths, melting the shoulder blades down, pressing down through the feet, lengthening up through the crown of the head. Great, and then exhale, coming back to center. Nice. So we're gonna take a moment and take a seat again. And just a question, anybody feels like any part of their body still really needs something? How are you feeling right now? Take a moment and just check in, feel free to even sit cross-legged or just be comfortable, whatever feels right for you on your chair. So are there any parts of you right now that are still calling out for extra something, stretch? Shoulders? Neck? This is like a really very tiny box show, okay? So we have a little bit, just enough time for that, I think. So let's do this, we're going to bring the arms to eagle. Take your right arm, right elbow under the left and we're gonna intertwine. Great. And then we're gonna draw the forehead just to rest on the hands. Nice. Then we're gonna let ourselves just round forward a little bit. And you're gonna tilt, just let the forehead still rest on your hands, we're gonna draw the left ear a little more to the left. We're gonna breathe into it like this, if you want to fold forward more, you can fold forward more, making sure your seat is stable on the chair as you tilt more to your left. Take a few more breaths there. Great. And then let's come back to center, we'll switch sides, come back to cactus. Great. And then this time, left elbow on top, no, I think it's right elbow on top and interlace. Nice. Draw the elbows forward, again, round in for a moment. Rest your forehead on to your hands and just slightly tilt the right ear towards the right shoulder a little bit more. And simply breathe into it. Take about five more breaths here. Great. Great. And then gently release, we'll come back to center. Nice. Let's just take a moment now in closing. So just closing your eyes, really finding a comfortable seated back, hands resting on your lap. I'm sitting cross-legged, but you can feel free to sit in whatever way feels best for you. And then let's take a deep breath in. And as you exhale again, let everything go. Take two more breaths like that. Nothing to have to contrive, just breath flowing in and out. And one more breath like that, breath flowing in and out. I'm gonna let you take a moment, bring your hands onto your heart. And still with the eyes closed, just ask yourself the question, what are you going to be able to take away from this experience today that will benefit you? What might you do again that you liked, that you enjoyed? And knowing that you gave yourself the gift of self-care and that you helped yourself to shift into your body's natural wisdom and ability to heal and repair. You allowed your parasympathetic nervous system to take charge instead of habitual rumination, aggression. Beautiful. And then if you'd like to just make a sound of om with me, just to vibrate everything in the body together, you can do that, or just listening, it's all good, whatever works for you. So taking a breath in here. Great. And then just letting the palms meet. Thank you, guys. Namaste.